This is good.
I have exactly six thirty. So with no further ado, we will call to order the May third twenty twenty one meeting of Lee County Regional Plan Commission. And the first order of business is the roll call. Ellis.
Okay.
Here.
Chris Ankle.
Here.
Ellen Smith.
Here.
Jim Book. Not present. John Hillson not present. Ben Forster.
Here. I believe that we have a quorum. A majority according with the alternate. Okay. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was so long ago. Hard to even imagine it. Anyway, the meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty, um, which is our last regular meeting, uh, the minutes were circulated to everyone. I have a couple of minor comments, which actually I've already gone into Alice. But there's a misprint on the first page where it says member Chris and then member again, there's no name after Chris. It should be Chris Ankle. And beyond that. Don't have any real corrections. Anybody else have any corrections to those minutes? There are motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Next order of business is comments from the visitor sections. One visitor, do you, do you have comments you'd like to make tonight?
I don't right now. I just wanted to observe the meeting.
Okay.
Join.
Let's move on to old business. Um, do we have any old business that's hanging around other than things that are on the agenda for new business?
None.
Okay. The first new business, first order of new business is the Lee County Greenways and Trailways Plan Updates. As you will recall, in the minutes of the January sixth meeting, uh, indicated that we would work on updating the plan to adequately reflect the greenways and trails that exist in Lee County. And everybody was circulated a copy of the existing amendment to the Greenways and Trail Plan, which was the revised plan of twenty ten. Uh, and then if you look at your material tonight on the table for there is a proposal for additional updates from the of the Black Hawk Hills Regional Council who are proposing to update Greenways and Trails plans for six counties. Carroll County, Joe Davies, Lee County, Ogle County, Stevenson County, and Whiteside County. Does anybody have any issues with participating in that plan? I think it's, I think it's as an overall procedure, I think it's a great thing to do. However, we have our own proposed amendment for revision to our own Greenways Plan, which would be separate from the plan that governs the six counties. And Jim Book and I have both raised the issue of whether the current Greenways Plan is really what should be in our comprehensive plan? Should that be all there is or should there be more? And I, I raise the question several times, namely, for example, why doesn't the Greenways Plan include state parks? Uh, other uh, greenways like Lowell Park, for example, which is not mentioned in either, either plan? Uh, or naturopathic grasslands? Or there's several others too that are huge. Let the minutes reflect the fact that John Hillson is here.
All right. Hi.
Hey, wait, John.
At six oh one, my, my wife reminded me I had a meeting tonight. I was making feed.
Oh, good woman.
Yeah, keep right. That's right. Reminds me regularly.
Okay, well, just to rehash, one very minor change to the minutes where a word was omitted. Uh, that's the minutes that we approved for the meeting that was a year and a half ago. Um, and then secondly, no new business. We moved on to, or excuse me, no old business, we've moved on to new business. Um, you've got a copy of this in front of you.
I do.
Okay. And basically it's something a proposal that six counties get together and together do a joint plan that would cover the whole area, which seems like a wonderful idea. And no one else had a problem with that. However, that would be separate from our own revision to our master plan and the Greenways portion of our master plan.
Separate from?
Separate from, yes.
Uh huh. Okay.
Okay. And then we just started to say that like Jim Book and I have talked about this before is that our Greenways portion only covers primarily bike trails and various other types of trails. And it doesn't even cover all of them for our county. For example, it, it doesn't mention the state parks. It doesn't mention the naturopathic grasslands. It doesn't mention like Lowell Park. And then these are just a few instances. There are many others. It doesn't mention the whole Green River recreational area. So there, I mean, there are just huge parts of the county which I would consider recreational and that simply are ignored. And, and so I feel, and I think Jim felt that our revision should include these areas in addition to what's already been done. That's for discussion.
You, I, I've been vaccinated. Do I need to wear this anyway?
No.
Okay.
We took a poll.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, so, uh, six counties and they would presumably have a broader encompassing effort than what we have. Um, maybe I should, maybe I should just stop talking and listen. Is there more to come here or, or is this, well, no. Um, I, I, I think that there's no problem with what they have done and what we have previously adopted. But what we have previously adopted is limited to what was fed us by this Black Hawk or anything. Is this done already? Then I don't know.
This is, this Emily is going to propose something tonight to us.
Okay.
Okay. And, and again, I have no problem with participating in that. But I, I will say that I've gone through the material. I don't see a definition of greenways. I don't know what that means. I don't know. I mean, again, when you look at what's done before, it's all related to bike trails primarily, and also other types of trails like that. And basically, I want to say that it completely ignores other types of recreational open space, but that our plan should include recreational open space as part of this section. That's, I mean, that's my belief.
So what's our role in this? Uh, we would what? Give Lee County permission to participate in this process?
No. Well, yes, but I, I mean, that, that's not a big deal. I, I don't think anybody opposes our, you know, going along with this and having them. I, I don't think anybody's against a plan that ties six counties together. I think it's wonderful. But it only goes so far. That's the point. It may, in other words, it only, it only covers the same types of things that we have covered in our the section of our comprehensive plan, which is limited only to, as I said, bike trails and a few other things. And it completely ignores other types of open space recreational uses.
Emily has typed in that she would be happy to answer questions and clarify. Would you like her unmuted? Or do you want to wait?
We'll wait. I, I mean, because we're not going to decide anything. This, that her plan, her plan is going to go ahead. I don't think, does anybody have any objection to participating?
With, so they are proposing to go ahead with this six counties together.
Right.
And at the end of that, then each of the county boards looks at it and approves, approves it then or what?
I, I don't know that it would have to go that far, but it would be at least a portion of it, to the extent it affected our county would be a part of a revision to our master plan. I mean, we don't have anything to say about what other, the other counties do.
No.
Nothing. No.
So? No. But at some point I would think that our county, elected officials in our county would have, have the opportunity to, to look at it and say, this looks great, or that there's, there's things that they would like to explore further before they approve it. Approve, approve our final participation in it or what?
No.
No.
Um, they're going to go ahead with this study. Mm hmm. And, and all we're doing is participating in the study. Okay. I think that's all that's being asked. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm not totally sure.
That's when we should listen to her.
Yeah, let's see what she has to say.
Are you there?
Yes. Am I coming through all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, um, I do have a bit of information to clarify a little. So I'm Emily Lauderdale. I'm a regional planner with Black Hawk Hills. Um, well, let's see, I do have some slides with information to share. Um, if I can do a screen share, otherwise if it's, if that's not going to work, I can just, um, you know, verbally share as well.
Yes.
You're okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead with the screen share.
Sure.
Okay. See. Okay, let me know if you can see that.
Yeah.
All right. So this is just some brief background information that'll help, um, clarify some of the information um, that Dan Pyatt and I have shared previously. Um, so just a little bit about the background as far as the ability to do the plan updates and the current plans. Um, so most of the current plans across the counties are between twelve and twenty years old. I think the original um, or the, the most recent full plan, uh, for Lee County is about nineteen years old. I actually did not know that there was a twenty ten revision. Um, so that would put it a little, a little younger than nineteen. And our ability to complete the updates, um, so, uh, Black Hawk Hills Regional Council staff are able to complete the updates due to, um, some, some funding from the Economic Development Administration for COVID nineteen response and recovery. Um, and we currently have, um, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Um, so a little bit over a year to do this type of work, uh, with that funding. And there wouldn't be cost to the county, to the county for this work. And I did want to clarify, um, so what we are proposing to do is to assist counties um, in, uh, the county level planning. Um, and we're, we were originally looking at doing county by county. Um, so have each county having their own, uh, Greenways and Trails Plan Update. Uh, we are interested in seeing whether the county would be, uh, would be open to, um, joining and we're looking at pairing counties. So, um, logically putting, uh, Lee County with Ogle County, um, and joining together on the process of the update and a joint plan. Um, to speak to a little bit about the regional plan, uh, that would be something that we would be able to come up with and combine after the efforts of, um, doing the, the county or two county updates. Um, so both of those would, uh, would come into play. Um, another thing that came up, I think, was the question about, uh, greenways. Um, what are greenways and would the focus be, uh, only on greenways and trails versus recreation areas and open spaces? Um, that's something that I noticed in the, uh, across the board as far as the, um, twelve to twenty year old older plans. Um, however, I think we would be looking at addressing parks and open spaces in this round of, um, of revision, since those, uh, spaces are really aren't captured in a whole lot of other planning documents. It would be a good tie in uh, with the Greenways and Trails Plans. Um, greenways, uh, from my understanding are open space. Uh, they're generally linear corridors that have benefits. Um, uh, like in conservation, um, and the term was used quite a lot, um, due to funding um, at the state level, I believe. And I don't think it's, uh, that particular funding is tied um, to the greenway definition as much anymore. And I, I don't see that so, so much um, in kind of more recent literature on, on trails and recreation planning. Uh, let's see, uh, just a quick overview of the process. Um, you know, we'd be looking at reviewing the current plans and incorporating, of course, the twenty ten revision um, in with that as well as maps. Um, there'd be a component of assessing public opinion and recreation demand, identifying local goals. Um, and incorporating, of course, the updates into a revised plan and map. Uh, and then, of course, um, getting feedback from the public on a draft, uh, plan and map. Uh, so needs, um, you know, from the county, uh, if there is interest in doing a joint plan with Ogle County, we'd uh, really just be looking for participation from two to three individuals who could, um, help us, um, identify priorities and, uh, those individuals would hopefully have knowledge of recreation and trails. Um, you know, we'd be asking for participation on some conference calls, um, throughout that, you know, year plus a month or so that we'd be working on it. Um, and some other items that we'd be hoping to collect at the county level and otherwise uh, would be planning and zoning documents, ordinances, um, different GIS layers that would help us through the process. So that's a quick summary of what we'd be proposing. I hope I answered some of the questions that had come up about the process and what we were proposing.
I, I, again, I'd like to go back to my basic point. Um, well, first of all, let's just look at some anomalies that exist presently. For example, well, and I don't know whether you participated in the twenty ten plan, but that talks about the meadows. And it doesn't mention Lowell Park, for example, which is immediately next to it. Now, why is that?
Yeah. So I wasn't, um, I wasn't here for the twenty ten revision, but I, I'm not sure. My guess is that, um, different jurisdictions may have been, uh, included and may not, others may not have been.
Again, let's go back to the basic point here. Of our county plan, we want to incorporate all recreational uses, not just greenway and trail uses.
Right.
Okay. And, and so as I said, and, and that's, I'm just speaking for myself here. I have absolutely no problem with working on this plan for an overall plan. But to adopt it as our portion of our master plan is another matter. I don't think we want to do that.
Uh, is, is the concern, um, because of, uh, recreation areas not being included?
Primarily.
Okay.
Well, as you said yourself, you, for example, are not including.
Oh. Yeah, no, I, I wanted, I want to clarify that. Um, what I was saying is I noticed in past plans, uh, recreation areas, uh, state parks, um, city parks were not included. It would be our intention to include all recreation areas in this round of the revision.
So that would be all the state parks?
Yes.
Franklin Creek State Park and everything else.
Grasslands, um, city parks, open spaces.
Okay. Well, that's, that's my point. And that's really the question here. And, and because I think we, we'd like to just give a comprehensive picture of what's in the county. Whether regardless of, you know, whether it's a of, you know, prepared by your group or by somebody else, or what, I mean, the fact that it exists, that the naturopathic grasslands sits there, you know, herds of buffalo, the only place in Illinois that has that. And the, uh, the Green River Recreation Area, thousands of acres. It's not mentioned.
Right. I would agree that you definitely would want to mention that to get a, a comprehensive look at recreation, uh, in the county.
Okay. Well, so the question is how do we get there? I mean, and, and with working with your group, which again, I have absolutely no problem with. Um, but we just want to make sure that we might want more than what you do.
Okay. Um, are there, are there certain gaps that you're, you're?
I just named about four or five.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I didn't catch it.
I said, I just named four or five gaps that.
Of the recreation areas. Yeah, we would be, we would be looking at all of the different recreation areas regardless of jurisdiction in the update process. So I don't think that would be a concern for how we would be approaching it. I think we're on the same page there.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead. Sure.
What, uh, when, when this, when this survey and plan is completed, what is the ultimate goal? What, what would we be able to do with this ultimately then? What would be the significance of it?
Great question. Um, so the ultimate goal would be to provide, uh, a comprehensive recreation and trails, uh, document for the county. Um, to support the county and assisting, uh, cities, um, you know, park districts and villages. Um, you know, also other, uh, entities, you know, if you have, um, open spaces that aren't within those jurisdictions, but, uh, it could help with, um, grant funding. I think, uh, a lot of state level grants are requiring some type of a planning document, um, for grant applications. So, um, that, that would be a, a primary purpose.
Okay. So it's, it's principally informational and, and then educational as well, but it's not regular. There's no regulatory aspect to it at all then. There's no intent of regulatory at all. Sounds like.
No, there, there wouldn't be, um, and because there are so many different jurisdictions that would be covered under it, uh, I think regulatory actions would, would be handled in a different way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have several questions or?
When do you?
I do.
Yeah. So this goes through June of twenty twenty two. When do you expect to have the final work product done?
Um, at that point.
Okay.
It'll take, it'll take that long then.
Oh, I would think so.
Yeah. It'll take a while.
A lot of the time we'll be working on, um, preparing and, and working with the public outreach. Um, those processes tend to take a while to make sure that people have enough time to respond.
So Emily, how do you, how do you do this? How do you reach out to? How do you get this out? Like public notification or what is the process to reach out to the?
Yeah. So there's a couple of different, um, methods and means of doing that. Um, survey methods, online surveys. Um, those, of, of course, have some downfalls as far as self-selecting population that tends to answer those questions. So there's some other opportunities to work with libraries. Um, uh, and other, uh, public locations. Um, we would hope that, uh, the individuals participating in that advisory group, um, would have some knowledge of, of the community and be able to connect us with some of those, um, venues and, and, uh, public spaces where we could connect with um, the broader population. Uh, we'd also be working with, um, recreation clubs and organizations, uh, to get their input. A lot of, um, you know, organizations that end up doing trail management, we've been working with them.
Okay. So what, um, basically what you're asking us to do is, um, appoint three to five people from the county to work with your group in connection with developing this plan. Is that what you're requesting basically?
Yes, that is the request. Um, with the, with the side question of is the county open to doing a joint plan with Ogle County?
But again, I, I just don't see the downside of a joint plan. Right?
I mean, so right now we, no, we don't see an issue.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, then we would really be looking.
Six counties doing, uh, one plan, quite frankly, yeah.
Yeah, no, um, that is something that we're looking at putting together, um, after we are able to work with, uh, the different counties. Um, one of the main tasks really is pulling information from the counties and to be able to do that effectively and efficiently, we'd hope to have, um, you know, a little bit more of a one-on-one with the counties to get that information. But we would definitely be planning on pulling it together into, um, you know, a regional synopsis of what's happening with recreation and trails in the six county area.
Where would the, where would the appointment come from? What level would the appointments come from?
Well, we would have to recommend to the county board that they appoint three people or five people that are knowledgeable and interested to participate.
Mm hmm. That seems appropriate.
And with the, I just wanted to clarify, um, it seems like there is, uh, support and interest in doing, uh, joint effort with Ogle County, in which case we'd really be looking for, um, two to three individuals.
It sounds like our role is what? Just, uh, recommending to the county board and then they take it and then whatever happens with it is up to them. That's right. Okay. I don't see, do we need a, a motion on this? I, we probably should.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea.
I, I would make a recommendation or I would move that we recommend to the county board that they, um, appoint, that they, uh, point two or three representatives from Lee County to participate in this.
Two or three knowledgeable.
Knowledgeable and interested people. Yes. Uh, it would be a recommendation to the county board. That's the motion.
Anybody second it? Ellen, you second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, well, in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, one other question. Do you have a liaison in the Department of Conservation or with the, um, the state parks?
The, yeah, Illinois DNR. Um, so Black Hawk Hills frequently works with, with DNR. I've had, uh, conversations with them on other projects. So we would certainly be in touch with them and.
But up to, up to now, they have not participated. I mean, I don't see where they participated.
Uh, participated in past, past plans or?
Right.
I'm not following.
Yes, in past plans, because there's nothing that really reflects anything they do.
Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm not quite sure of all the history on, uh, DNR's participation in past plans. Um, they do have recreational plans, so they have the Illinois, um, uh, let's see, it's, uh, outdoor recreation comprehensive plan. Um, they have some past trails planned. So if they do have plans at the state level.
Well, they have a state park plan just for what's along the Rock River. Castle Rock State Park in, in, which is an old county and, uh, the, uh, the parks in, in Lee County and Franklin Creek State Park and tying that together, it's all part of their master plan. It should be part of our master plan. Because it affects huge portions of, uh, land here in Lee County.
Certainly, yes. Yep. And it would definitely be part of our plan to, uh, be working with DNR lands and, uh, and staff on the planning.
So Emily, when you are working this and feeding back to the county, the information that you're gathering, after you get this out into the public and begin the process, do you report back? do you report back to us as a planning commission or are you reporting to the county board or how?
That's a good question, yeah, so I, I can, that's, that's an open question, you know, to the county. I can certainly plan to report back to the planning commission. That was kind of my assumption as I'm presenting the proposal here. But if further information needs to go to the county board, you know, that can definitely happen. Via presentation or, you know, a short summary.
Okay, no, that's good. I'd like to hear it. I'd like to come here for sure and then whatever we need to get to the county board. Then we can pass it on. So I think that's a good, good plan.
So maybe we'll hear from you again and, I mean, we'll make a recommendation to the county board that they consider making this appointment and then you could bring us across this thing.
Yes, yep, yep, we would be doing a kickoff call shortly after and then kind of go into assessing existing conditions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Are any of you interested in it? If I didn't have so much going on, I would be interested, I do not. So there's no way.
I, I would be interested, but I, you know, I mean, no. I mean, I, I would love to, but.
You would add to the side, okay.
Because I've got very strong ideas on this, as a matter of fact. And I've dealt with the state and the Department of Conservation. And she's, she has trouble dealing with them, I can tell you that right now.
So I will bring this to the county, put it on the county agenda this month.
Yeah.
Get someone hopefully, a couple of people.
Okay, the next order of business, well, there are two items for discussion. The first one is just where do we stand? And this is simply a report on the solar energy projects. Dee can give us a report on this.
So the original solar ordinance was amended in November. And since November, there's been a couple of hiccups that it was brought back up to the table for more amendments to it. And the county board selected an ad hoc committee to make the appropriate amendments. The ad hoc committee came up with a good plan and forwarded to the county board. The county board looked at it and made a motion to set it on the table until this month to be voted on as a new amended ordinance. But as Bill and I were talking, the procedure wasn't done correctly. There wasn't a public notification in a sense, more like a testimony given hearing type situation. So I think we're going to try to bring it back to either the ZBA or the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission has a couple of conflicts.
It's the Planning Commission of the board as opposed to this planning.
This Planning Commission.
There are conflicts on this board?
Yes.
Okay.
So I am asking to bring it to the zoning board for them to proceed with the solar ordinance amendment.
So what are the conflicts with this board? Or, or am I not supposed to ask?
Would that, would one of them be me?
Maybe, John. Yes, yes. To a book, for single. So we have to.
Okay, that's fine, you know, again, there's no problem with setting up another committee to handle this and as long as the hearing procedures and the notice procedures are filed, the same as if we had heard it, there's no problem. Right, I mean, that's what I see.
So could we just briefly hear what, what it is though?
Yeah, I better report, I just want to stand.
Yeah, well, this December, I hired a renewable energy coordinator, Alice Hinkle. And Alice, are you ready to?
I'm gonna bring any of my score with me.
Any of you? Some overviews?
Yeah, just, just briefly.
They increased the setbacks, they've added language for vegetative screening. It establishes decommissioning. I can get you a copy of what is sitting on the, on the county board's table if you want.
I, I just want to brief, you know, I don't need to read all the little details. I just wanted to know basically what the.
I think the big things was setbacks.
The screening.
And screening, that was major, I believe.
Yeah.
No, that's okay.
So then why did this, wasn't there a big solar farm that got voted down?
Yes.
And so that got voted down because? Or should I ask you some other?
No, no, notification problems, concerns.
This is the one on the east side proposing, east side county?
Oh. I think that the lesson to be learned is you've got to have these hearings done properly. You know, I mean, it's spelled out in the ordinance. And again, if it's decided that it's not our function to hold the hearing, the county board has every right to appoint an ad hoc committee to do it. But that committee has to live up to the same provisions of the zoning ordinance that we live up to if we had heard it.
Rick Humphrey has a question.
Go ahead.
He's not, can't hear you, Rick.
Still can't hear you, Rick. No.
Let's go turn his mic on.
It's saying he's on, but we're not able to hear him.
We can't hear you, Rick.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if Rick's muted or not, but I'm completely in favor of this committee. Your function is to review this. I am not in favor of going back to a planning commission. This committee is the committee that is supposed to review our comprehensive plan. If there's conflicts, I would expect those people who serve on this committee to either abstain or resign from the committee. But it is not any other committee's responsibility to handle this other than yours, in my opinion.
In our, in the ordinance, it does state, it could be either the planning commission or the zoning board, Casey.
Or another committee formed by the.
By the board.
By the board. The board has the, has the ability.
Wait a second, that, that ordinance is on the table, right?
We're talking about the zoning ordinance.
Right, that's on the table, and that's not our active plan. So our current situation that we have today, it's your responsibility. That ordinance hasn't passed, that's not their responsibility. It's yours to have public hearings, it's yours to review our comprehensive plan, and it's yours to determine whether or not solar fits in our county and where solar fits in our county. That's my opinion.
Under our code. Under the code, Casey, the zoning board or the planning commission can hold the hearings for a tax amendment. So if there is a change to any part of the ordinance, either the zoning board or the planning commission can hear the hearings on it. So due to the conflicts that we have with this board, that's why we're proposing for the zoning board to hold a review.
Yeah, it wouldn't be right for, for a group with so many conflicts to be voting on it. We can't hear you.
I keep getting muted. I think Rick's muted as well. The host keeps muting us, so Alice, if you could just not mute me, I won't speak out of turn. But yeah, I mean, you can do it however you want. I think this is, I think it's your guys' responsibility and you should handle it, and that's my opinion.
How about Rick?
Rick's unmuted.
Okay, if I could just respond briefly, it's not a decision that we can make. It's a county board decision, rightly or wrongly, that only they can make. We cannot decide that we are the one that's qualified and that can ignore conflicts of interest. It's up to the county board. We serve at their pleasure.
Right, so then I guess send it to the county board and let us decide that what committee is going to serve it where?
That's exactly right. That's, that's exactly right.
So, so Rick says he still can't speak. I don't know, he just.
He's been unmuted this whole time, and I don't know why you keep getting muted. Every time you stop speaking, it, it.
I mute myself, just so that way you don't hear background noise, but then it says I got to have your permission to unmute me, so.
Okay, it says, it says it's set that you guys can unmute yourself, so let me know if you continue.
Yeah, I don't know about Rick, I'm just telling you, he, he can't voice his concerns, so.
Can he call in?
Could call and put him on speakerphone.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Have, have Rick, can you hear us, Rick? If you can hear us, Rick, can you call us? We can put you on speakerphone.
Who's number? Do you want to call them?
I got Rick's number.
You've got Rick's number? Awesome.
Well, he's changed it.
Hello?
Hey, Rick, it's Ben, in the group. You're on speaker. Are you there, Rick?
He's in a dead zone.
Yeah, yes, now again.
Okay, I don't know what's going on, it wouldn't allow me to speak, but I, I guess my concern with the solar ordinance, I know there's been a lot of a lot of time put in by a lot of people. My biggest concern is that the new solar ordinance is proposed as the LISA score is not to really be a consideration. And if you look at our long-term plan, I mean, it's pretty clear in there that the LISA score is first and foremost in most any zoning or special use that's put before the board. So I, I guess I've got concerns with that going forward. I think that we need to address that if solar is, is what we want in the county and where we want it. But to put it in an ordinance that it could bypass, basically, the long-range plan, I think, is, is not correct.
If I could respond to that, and I think I'm correct here. The, the issue is a little more, a little deeper than what you're suggesting. The real question is whether solar is an agricultural use. If it's an agricultural use or construed as an agricultural use, then no LISA is needed, it's not required.
But then, I mean, where's, where's the definition of solar to be an agricultural use? I'm not arguing the point that it's, that it's a special use. If, if, well, I'll just, I'll rephrase that then, if it was not considered or if it's considered ag, you wouldn't have to come before a special use, would it?
Well, yes, yes.
Well, why would it if it's ag?
It's not, it's not, it's not what, if you look at the definition of ag and you look at the definition of agricultural use, agricultural use covers a much broader spectrum of uses than ag. Ag deals with basically traditional farming procedures. And then when you do something different, like you build a grain facility or something like that, that's a, an agr, that's a special use, agricultural use.
Sure, absolutely.
But you don't need a LISA for that, and the ordinance says that.
But we have to have a LISA to build a house on certain pieces of property.
Because it's not an agricultural use.
So you're gonna, you're saying that by definition that we, that these solar farms can just pop up anywhere, whenever, under any terms and conditions?
What, what I said to begin.
Because they fall under agricultural use?
No, no, what I said to begin with was that the question was not whether a there should be a LISA or not. The question goes right to what you just said, is it an agricultural use under that?
So, so is a wind farm considered the same?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. That's the only reason they exist.
So LISA doesn't, doesn't have to be applied there either?
No.
It's not the way I read the, the long-term plan, but.
You're right. No, it's, it's, it's not the plan. The plan is nothing but a guiding instrument. It's the zoning, it's the zoning.
It's a guide, you are correct.
But it's the zoning.
But if you're saying we're going to bypass the LISA score, that plan no longer comes into play and it's immaterial.
The zoning ordinance is what controls, it controls even the plan. The plan is developed under the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is the key document. The key document defines all these terms. If you go to your zoning ordinance, go under definitions, go to agricultural.
So your zoning ordinance overrules your, your long-term plan?
Absolutely.
So why don't we have a long-term plan then? If they would take place in precedence, why do you need a long-term plan?
Because the long-term plan merely defines what the goals of the zoning ordinance are. Right?
I, I kind of disagree, but again, that's my, that's my point. And I guess I definitely contention with the solar ordinance that there's a lot of things in there that they have changed. But I just disagree that they should be able to bypass the LISA score. And I don't even know why it's in the zoning ordinance to be getting them up.
It's not specifically in the zoning ordinance unless.
It's the very last sentence in the new one that's proposed.
In the, in the solar order inside, at the end, it does say that the LISA score is, is not to be.
Well, if, if.
Can that stop a solar farm?
Okay, okay, that's not necessary. If it falls under the definition of an agr, of, right, the agricultural use, you don't even need that.
But it is in the ordinance, in the. Can you repeat that again, Chris, please? At the end of the, the existing solar ordinance, okay? It's, it's, it says, and I, I don't have it in front of me to read it, but it says that the LISA does not stop the development of a solar farm, in so many words. So it's not to be taken that, that way. Now, it's, there's like four sentences or phrases that it says trying to, trying to help the board decide and to understand that the LISA doesn't stop a solar farm. You can have the LISA, and the LISA is done on the solar farms, but it's not to prevent them, such as a house being built in an ag zone, where if a house scores too high on the LISA score, then it's going to fail, no permit can be issued for that house. But that's, that doesn't apply to the solar.
You have to go back to the definitions in the zoning ordinance. A house is simply not an agricultural use unless it's a farmhouse. Farmhouse is separately defined. The same thing is true with special uses and agricultural zones. They are, they are defined, not specifically.
So what's the difference between a house and a? So what's the difference between a house and a farmhouse?
Because the farmer lives in the, in the farmhouse and farms the property. That's the difference.
But that's not, that's not necessarily true. You guys are gonna consider, you just considered it your last meeting for a descendant who is going to be building the house, which I fully support. Don't get me wrong here. But when you start splitting hairs like this, you're opening up a Pandora's box.
That's a state statute.
Yeah, I think really what it comes down to, and I, I hear what Rick, Rick's opinion, but I think our comprehensive plan outlines where in the county and how it changes the aesthetic view and the rural characteristic of our county. One thing that we have in our county says that the main focus of the comprehensive plan is to maintain the rural characteristic of the county. These solar farms, whether or not they're agricultural or not agricultural, I get it, that's a, that's a point of contention, but what I want this committee to understand is to define where they go, how many acres we should have, and what the public hearings, let them have the public hearing, let people have the opportunity to come in and say, you know, why or why it shouldn't be there. If it's gonna change the rural characteristics of the county, the comprehensive land plan commute, you guys right there are up to your, that's your, that's what your task to with, to design where they go. That's, that's it. Now, if we say that they need to go, it needs to go to planning because we have conflicts, so we have conflicts and, and let it be to the board to see where, who's gonna do it. But somebody needs to do it because the public needs to have an opportunity to have their voices heard. That's my opinion.
Okay, if I could just respond to that. Ordinances don't specify where special uses go. They simply provide for special uses, and they say that they go there where they're appropriate and where they're, when they are approved by the board. And, and, I mean, there are all kinds of things out there that I would like, not like to see anywhere, like for example, these manufacturing facility that makes the dihydrous ammonia, okay? That's an agricultural use. That's a special use in an agricultural zone. It's permitted without a Lisa. And it exists. We have those.
Right, okay.
Now, why is?
Are they, are we talking, are we talking about a 10,000 acre anhydrous ammonia recycling plant somewhere in our county or something that I'm not aware of?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just giving you an example of how special uses work. You look at the site and say, is this appropriate for that use? It's site-specific. There's no place in the ordinance that says, except for a plan unit development, which is a special use, and where we have designated what's called special areas. There are only a few of those. Other than that, it's just a general definition that can be anywhere within the zone where it's permitted. That's, that's.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing whether or not the Lisa score should be considered. I believe the language that we have in the ordinance that's being tabled right now is appropriate. It doesn't say we disregard the Lisa. I, I, I don't agree with Rick 100% on that, like, it says we have to take in all the other factors that, that are out there and decide and make a determination what's in the best use. It doesn't say that we solely go by the Lisa score. So the Lisa score is still a consideration. It's just not our primary gu- guiding principle that we have to absolutely follow. So in my opinion, the Lisa score is relevant. How relevant when it comes to this is, is, is up for discussion, I guess. But my, my bigger concern is it's the planning commission's job to determine where in the county and how big these are allowed, and, and the public's supposed to have a hearing. If you read the whole plan, you wrote it, Bill, I mean, you understand that you want, you get it, like, it changes the rule characteristic of the county. We have one line in there currently that says we should consider green energy, primarily wind and solar, and it's not addressed. I think it's this committee's responsibility to address solar. That's all I'm saying. And if we really want to get down to brass tacks, probably wind as well. And whatever you come up with as board members, we should, we should support, we should voice our concerns right here, like I am tonight. And then we close ranks, we speak of it no more. Once the public hearings have happened, once you guys make your decisions, then, then that's what we do. But we gotta give the process an opportunity to work, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this issue? And I don't believe that we have anything to do with whether this was a report. Correct? That's all this was, was reported?
Just a discussion.
A discussion.
Are we gonna go ahead with updates on the comprehensive plan?
I, I, I thought we were only dealing with the greenways areas on the comprehensive plan.
And behind that, do we need to look at updating the comprehensive?
Updating the comprehensive plan is a big deal. We're gonna have to, again, hire professional land planners as we did in 2010. It's an expensive process.
We are changing, we are changing the rural characteristics of our county. Our comprehensive plan says that if we do that and we have some organization come in, whether it be solar, wind, and hygrous, that we will review our comprehensive plan and update it. And that is the task of this committee. If you're not willing to do that task, then you need to move forward and be gone and let somebody else come in and do it. But right now, the task of the planning commission should be to review the comprehensive plan and update it to include or not to include solar. That's my opinion. I'm only one of 24 people.
Are updates to the county plan recommended to our committee by the county board? Does that come from the county board? For us to begin that process, or, or do we recommend it to the county board that they begin that process? Because that would require funding.
No, the county board determines whether we hire somebody to work with us to amend the comprehensive plan.
So that an, an initiative to update the county board to update along.
Well, we couldn't, we, we couldn't suggest to the county board that we think that the plan should be to be considered at this point for revision. Uh, that it's changed since X, Y, Z, I forget the date, and, and that we think it's time to look at it again. Are they willing to spend the money to do that? I mean, as I recall, it's, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars at least.
That's small potatoes in, in, in what we're talking about right now for a county, as far as.
Like Everett Dirksen, jeez.
I mean, considering what we're talking about, the change that there is for the next 30 to 35 years to our county to, to tie up tens of thousands of acres potentially, I think it's due diligence that's required from some committee, whether it's your guys' committee or the other committee.
But it's the county board that has to make that determination.
Right. But would your, I guess my question would be for you then, do you believe that right now that we have a robust enough comprehensive plan that addresses solar as it is today on its face?
The county plan does not address solar at all.
Thank you.
Nor did.
You answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, nor did it deal with windmills.
Right. Well, two wrongs don't make a right. So I appreciate your honesty.
I understand that. Again, it goes back to the definitions and, and.
The county board, is, is it the county board or the zoning committee that holds the hearings on these when they are brought to the county for permits to build? Who, who, the zoning board holds that?
Right.
And then they take input at, at that time, and then what, make recommendations to the county board?
Well, the zone, yeah, the zoning board has more power than we, than we do, certainly.
Yes, yeah, yes. But ultimately, they make a recommendation to the county board, and the county board votes on it particularly.
In order to make a zoning change.
Okay.
That's required.
It, it sounds as though the question here is whether this process is has any kind of overall guiding plan to it, or whether it is just one project at a time, one project at a time under consideration? And is this a little bit like, is this a little bit like when we change the interpretation of the definition of, of agriculture use to prevent one, and to prevent unlimited expansion of subdivisions across county, I guess. Is it a little bit like that, that?
No, no, I don't think so. I mean, I, I view it differently. I mean, clearly, when the 97 plan was adopted and the second one, there is no question that, and as he stated, the prime objective is to preserve a, a prime farm. That is the number one objective of the plan. That's where the way the zoning code is written. That's what the comprehensive plan does. That's why it leaves 99% of the county agriculture, which it does. But in the agricultural zone, you can have these, what's defined as a special use, which are defined in the ordinance. Not specifically, because nobody knows what, what God's gonna come with next week. So you, the, the language is not, you know, particularly clear. It's vague. The question is, is, is this use something that farms, that, you know, helps farms? It's not so much tied to the earth. I mean, I, I will grant you that.
Well, it's still harvesting the sun. I mean, that's what we do. We harvest the sun.
Okay, but you understand that's.
Yes, that's where we're at. Yes.
Can I interject a little bit? Because this is actually why I came to the meeting to be passionate about and had involvement in. But, and we've touched on a lot of different topics, and early it was trying to formulate some sort of words. But yes, it is. In three months, 12,000 acres of the county's land was proposed to be changed dramatically, the aesthetic of the community of the, of the rural ag aesthetic to be dramatically changed to more industrialized use. That does have nothing to do with agriculture as defined by agriculture. I mean, if you, if you look at the definition of agriculture, this is energy production. It's nothing different than a coal-fired power plant or a nuclear energy plant. It's taking ag resources and converting it to energy production 100%.
It's a cash crop. So is ethanol.
Yeah, ethanol, ethanol is.
It, it takes the, it takes the farm ground, it takes the farm ground out of our base acreage.
Yes.
And it changes its use from agricultural to commercial by the Department of Agriculture. You guys need to determine whether or not that's acceptable for Lee County or not. So me as a board member know how I should vote, yes or no. You need to have public hearings and do that. That's my opinion.
With ethanol, there is, to address that, there is byproduct, which is the additive, actually, to, if you did, to the hog, it's a small pigs that we had. So I mean, it is something, though, that is energy use that was another derivative of crop, you know, row crop production maintains. Um, and I'm, I'm for solar and just for doing it wisely. So when we talk about, uh, planning and looking at parts of the community or the county where it seems more applicable or where it may not, we just heard from Green, uh, the, the, the Greenways Commission. I mean, the one proposal of solar, the chain link fences and the barbed wire run right through. If you looked at the plan, where the potential proposed trailway might be, was through the middle of where we were just gonna convert and chain link fence and enclose for no one to pass through or no one to do anything. So there's, there's things, there's decisions with this, these types of projects that collide with others, and that's planning, that's county planning. You know, and yes, in three months, 12,000 acres, they're just, there's nothing strategic about where they pop up. It's just anywhere. So we could have it right in close proximity to the edge of the, of Dixon, where it could be future development that could go on there, which would have a Lisa score that potentially would not allow for it to sit there. But we would ignore that, and, and we would just place it there anyways. Just again, it's like planning. We'd like to think of if we're gonna come to the county with this in a big way, to plan it better in rural areas, more rural environments where we're not impacting, you know, right around the houses and having more property values potentially impacted as well in a negative manner for what the environment got converted to that they're living around. So, you know, I do hope that there is more consideration, you know, going into where we're going and what we're doing, and maybe how much do we participate? I mean, where is the, how, how, to your point, we have 300,000 acres in the county that's ready to be converted to solar, and it's no big deal. It's fine. You know, I mean, but what is realistic?
Who's, who's saying it's fine? No, no one's saying it's fine.
With, without, without looking more, that's the point, is nobody has a voice.
No one's not saying it's fine, no either.
Yes. We haven't opened up the discussion to say, you know, from the community, you know.
Well, there should be hearings. I mean, I, I certainly am the first one to say that.
And hearings on the topic of this in a bigger way, not here's a petition that was submitted to Dee and.
Okay, if there's, like, maybe the initial discussion should be, should the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance, not the plan, the zoning ordinance be amended to define uh, solar as an agricultural use or not? Start there.
I don't think we're gonna get that. I don't think we're gonna get that. From my experience, I would love to have the state Illinois or somebody else come in here and tell us that, yes, it's, is, or no, it's not, one way or another. So as a county board member.
They will tell you that it is an agricultural use.
Who will?
The state of Illinois, it's an agricultural use.
Uh, well, not according to the Department of Agriculture. They said that it's, uh, it takes it out of our base acreage and they, it, the tax base is now changed from agricultural to commercial.
Well, it, the tax base is a matter for the county to determine, not the state. The assessments are based upon the use determined by the company.
That's not true. Case of solar, the state sets the tax assessments for that.
Oh, okay.
So, but the bottom line is, I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't care either way. I just want the due diligence, the due process, whatever, for the people that pro or con, have their opportunity to come and say it. And then as a county, we determine what the best use is for the land. It is the planning commission, the comprehensive planning commission's task to determine that. That's, that's what, that's what you exist for.
Our problem, um, and, and again, this is, a lot of this has been going on without my involvement at all, is simply, if we are going to be excluded from the process because of possible conflicts, how can we even do anything regarding the consideration of the amendment to the plan? The county board has got to say, we need a definition to see whether.
I mean, you have, you have alternate, you have alternate members, right? Is every member on there have a conflict, or do the members that have conflicts, you know, not partake in this, the construction of whatever it is that you're doing, and they, they basically, I don't say they have to resign or, or walk away from the board, but they shouldn't have direct influence over what's going on. They should step away from that and let the alternative members in. And if there isn't enough alternative members, then maybe the board chairman needs to appoint new members or whatever needs to happen. So you have an unbiased group of people who can look at this in a totally, you know, non-biased way to determine what the best use of the land is. That's, that's all I'm asking for. That's, that's why you guys exist, right? Or, or am I missing something?
No, that is why we exist, but we don't have, I don't have the power to fill a vacancy if, like if John says I'm resigning. I, I don't have the power to.
Right, that's our board chairman, and that's our responsibility, and I get that. If that's what he so chooses, because he needs to do that. If he's, if it is a conflict, if it's truly a conflict of interest, which if he's involved in, in putting his ground into solar, I would imagine it is. But that's not for me to determine. I'm sure there's other ways to determine that. But I think that we absolutely need you guys to do the job of the planning commission, and that's why you're here.
Okay, I don't know that we can do any more tonight on this. I mean, does anybody feel differently about it?
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts. I know that I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm sharing my, I think now's the time to share your opinion. And so I'm sharing it with you now. I appreciate you guys doing what you do. If you need more help, let me know however it is. Like I say, I don't, I don't have a, a, a preference one way or another, pro, con. I just want the, the, I just want you guys to be objective and look at it and do your job. And then I'll support you through the process and whatever product comes out, if it's a map that says the whole entire county gets solar, and that's fine. If it's a map that comes out that says we're gonna limit it to these areas based off of economic development, future opportunities, I think that's, that's your guys' job. You know how it works. So I will support you in that, and I will support you in the process, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
I'm on the fence as to whether I'll be in it or not. I'm technically signed up to be in it, but I, I'm leaning away from it. I don't care one way or the other. Um, I could abstain from any votes. I really don't.
So what Bill and I discussed right before the meeting is because I saw so many conflicts that maybe we should pass this over to the zoning board, get it on their agenda for June, have an open house or a public hearing. Testimony taken. Look at the amendments that we are proposing and bring it to the county board. Probably in July.
Just as another aside, I, I, I don't see this issue being something that you should amend the comprehensive plan for.
Not the comprehensive plan, the solar ordinance.
No, I know that, but this suggestion was made that we amend the comprehensive plan because we've got thousands and thousands and thousands of acres of farm land. And it was, they're, let's just say they're all the same. They're all fungible. Who are we to say that the farm should be over here and not here and not there? There's no basic reason for it. I mean, to designate it, there's no reason other than to say, let's not put any within, or more than a mile from a, a nuclear plant or from, uh, that, that they were only gonna permit them around, uh, power plants within a mile or two miles or something like that.
That we're only gonna put up poor producing soil versus A, class A soils or.
Well, I mean, I suggested that right off the bat that it should go to all amounts of township. Cause it's all floodplain and it's right next to a power plant.
Man, they have those utility lines there. They could.
They got everything, everything is there. That's where, if, that's where it should go, if it's going anywhere. I mean, if you have to say, give me some reasons.
Right.
Those are the reasons.
But who makes that decision?
Well, that's nobody. That's the problem.
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't understand why these companies aren't making that decision. That's what I don't understand. But that's life, so.
Right.
And you know, and I've, and I've seen some, uh, some, you know, snippets on TV recently where people are growing crops underneath these things. They're seeded grass. You can graze goats. Well, do we have another order of business or is it? I have a business.
Comprehensive plan updates. We don't have to do a whole plan. We could, we could hire a company to just make amendments to it. But it's not gonna be so costly.
Has there been suggestions as to what needs to be updated on the comprehensive plan?
Suggestions about solar and wind.
Yeah, so we're just talking solar and wind probably, huh?
Yeah.
Again, I think that's a decision for the county board. We can, you know, just pass it about and say we are unable to. This is not our function to make this decision.
Well, theoretically, the county board is the accountable arm of the county. I mean, there's representation from every district. The, the representatives from every district, constituents can speak to them. Uh, it would seem logical that that would be where the recommendation would come from, to update the comprehensive plan.
Well, it has to come from them. They spend the money. We don't, we can't spend any money. I mean, they have to make that decision. I mean, they have to say, we can't resolve this ourselves. We have to, we need somebody to tell us. And we're gonna pay for it. That's basically it.
Did you talk about the wind farm stuff yet?
No.
No.
Okay. I think that's another just a report. Let's go on with that.
That Alan, um, have the, uh,
Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. We're looking to update what we have. Not sure what year this came in play, but we have a lot of, um, it definitely needs to be updated. That's why I brought it here.
If I can jump in just a little bit, with the wind or energy systems, we developed the ten fifteen fifteen way back when, back in two thousand. And it's, it's very, you know, small. It doesn't have a whole lot of stuff in it. And over the years, with the issues with wind farms, we had an ad hoc committee come in and they, we worked a year. This is when I was in zone.
Right, right.
We worked well over a year with that and came up with a brand new ordinance that was, and I'll be very honest, was so restrictive. You couldn't have put another wind farm in, in Illinois, in Lee County. County board did turn it down, so it, it went away. So the, the wind farm that was not getting the door prior to that taking place, because that also included, uh, 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 what do you call it? The stop of everything for six months, moratorium for six months. It included that, it gave the, the ad hoc committee time to develop the ordinance. County board turned it down. And the reason for being turned down was it was too restrictive. The solar, sorry, the wind farm that came in, right after that said, we will follow all these as, as conditions. In, in, in other words, the ordinance didn't. It failed.
Right, it was not.
So all the items that were in the for the majority, I won't say every, each and every one, because the county board turned it down. They went and agreed to doing she's thirty-three, five conditions. I don't know how many were in it. It got to the county board after the public hearing for that wind farm. It came to the county board and prior to the county board voting on that, eight more conditions were added by the county board chair. And that ordinance, or I'm sorry, that petition was approved. So with all of those conditions, they're only conditions, they're not an ordinance. Then the next wind farm that came in, we said, well, if you're gonna come in, you're gonna do everything that the last wind farm did. And we're gonna call them conditions because you can set conditions under special use. So that's what we did with the next wind farm that came in. And the next wind farm that came in, we don't have an ordinance that says all of those conditions, including the other eight.
Right, they aren't uniform.
They're not. So this, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of back in Dee's question here. Is that the, the wind ordinance review, and today's only discussions, does need to look at including them in an ordinance form that would make it a lot easier for Dee and Alice to talk when these people come in saying, okay, we want to put a wind farm in somewhere in Lee County. Okay, here is the ordinance and you hand it to them. When they see our ordinance, they, they, they say, well, this, yeah, we can do that. Well, no, we have other conditions that you'll have to follow. But why isn't it in an ordinance form? Because this is the way it is today. We need to do that, I think, and get an ordinance that spells out all those things that we are making other wind farms do. And who knows, we'll probably have another one coming in, you know? And we, we still have to do all those conditions, or I, I think that's a deal to.
Right.
So it would be so much smoother to have the ordinance redone and include everything. And maybe there's other things you want to include in it, you know, or delete, whichever. But I think it, it bears a lot of weight that we need to address that in the very near future.
So I typed up a document that is based off of what we have been having the wind companies follow when they come in and petition, um, that includes all of these conditions in an ordinance form. There are still eight other conditions though, um, the additional eight that we would need to work in there somehow. But I feel that would give you guys a good starting point for moving forward on this. Um, the state is also looking at making changes.
Now, has the state's attorney looked at this?
No, this is all preliminary.
Because, you know, there are a lot of cases now on knocking out conditions in, in various other counties at state. And there's really no point in adopting an ordinance which puts in conditions which are not gonna stand, right? So, um, I mean, if, if that has to be reviewed before you just willy-nilly say, we're gonna add these conditions. I mean, like, I, I don't know, I haven't read it, but heights of fences and all of that type of thing. You know, you can't go, I mean, we, somebody might say, well, I need twelve feet fence. There's some court that said, no, it can't be over six feet or whatever. That's what I'm saying. So.
Moving forward.
Yeah, I think that the state's attorney should be made aware of the fact that we're doing this. And ask, uh, ask him if he has the time to, um, take a look at these cases and see whether he thinks there's anything in here that's unconstitutional. And then if he says this is okay, then we'll do it.
Okay.
But I, I mean, rather than go the other way and do it first and then have it knocked out later.
Okay. So, moving forward, could we meet again next month and then start?
What, what day would it be? Yeah, that's fine.
Perhaps with farm pardons?
Contact the state's attorney, give him a copy of this. Uh, present a motion to adjourn. So move. Favor.
Bye.
Bye. Motion to adjourn.